Planning and zoning commission for the city of Granbury will now come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, October 17th, 2022, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. The first order of business tonight is, they reversed these, public comments on agenda items, on non-public hearing item, agenda items. Do we have public hearing? Okay. We have no speaker cards. We'll move on to C, which is our consent agenda, approval of the September the 12th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Do I have any changes or additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Haves and a second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Angela, I'm not voting tonight. Oh, there's, I'm not voting for sure tonight. Right. And opposed, say nay. Minutes are passed as presented. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing to consider the request of Lars Anderson Associates Incorporated for Home Depot to replat Lot 3 of the Home Depot Overstreet Edition as Lot 3R of the Home Depot Overstreet Edition. The property is addressed as 415 East Highway 377. This is PL-2021-35. Bridgette? Right?
Amy.
Amy, sorry.
All right, well, um, the actual property is located at 415 East Highway, I'm sorry, East Highway 377. The size of the lot is, or the property is 12.656 acres and is zoned heavy commercial. Plotting history on the property is that it's Lot 3R Home Depot Overstreet Edition. There are two, um, there's actually three properties on that plat, um, which includes the two lots to the north as well. The purpose of the replat is that they're doing a building expansion on the east side of the building, um, to expand the, the tool center, resulting in a replat for the utility easement abandonment, as well as, uh, the existing fire lane will be moved over closer to the western property line. This is the actual plat that was submitted with the application. I have zoomed in on a portion of the plat that shows the changes. As you can see to the north, there's a utility easement change here, and the, this gray area is where the tool center will be expanding, which overlaps with the existing fire lane and will have to be shifted over to the west to, uh, indicate a new, uh, fire lane. And this is the application that was submitted for the replat. There are no variances requested, and the DRC review comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat. Your voting options are to approve the replat as presented, approve the replat with conditions, or deny the replat. And that is all.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm Lane Span stepping in for the applicant, and I was just here to, uh, answer any questions y'all might have.
Any questions, um, commission members?
Mr. Grace? Would you explain the screening process you're going to, uh, present for this change?
Yes, the screening process, we have eight foot vegetation that's already mature, that's going in that area, making an L, basically pushing back and screening the parking lot to the southeast.
Eight feet all the way down from one end of the building, all the way to the extent of the, the parking area that you're proposing to, uh, use?
Yes, it's coming from the turn-in point just to the north of the building and going down probably about 10 parking spaces, making an L, blocking that off.
And, uh, the, uh, the area closest to 377 where the vehicles will be parked?
That's gonna make the L shape coming around.
So this is only regarding the replat for the tool center extension?
I recognize that.
The next, the next item on the agenda will, um, address that.
I realize that, but you know, they are related, you know, so I want to make sure that, uh, there's consistency between the two as far as the vegetation is concerned.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
If you'd prefer, Mr. Grace, I can go ahead and open up D2, and we'll talk about these together if that's okay with you, Amy. I think the, the concerns are there. I'm gonna go ahead and open D2, public hearing, consider the request of Lars Anderson Associates for Home Depot for a specific use permit to allow trailer sales rentals, construction equipment sales and rentals, portable building sales and outdoor storage in a heavy commercial zoning district. The property's address is 415 East Highway 377. It's SUP 2021-25, and I'm gonna, uh, open the public hearing in conjunction with D1. Amy?
Yes, ma'am. As stated before, the property is located at 415 East US Highway 377 and heavy commercial. There's a little more detail on this slide regarding our plating history. It has the two, uh, out parcels adjacent to the north. The purpose of the special use permit is to, uh, approve the use of trailer sales and rental, um, construction equipment sales rental, portable building sales and outdoor storage. Now, these bullet points are specific to the actual definition of the use in the ordinance. Uh, the applicant is requesting to do trailer rental, construction equipment rental, and portable building, I'm sorry, portable building sales and outdoor storage. The map indicates, uh, all the different zoning districts surrounding the property. You have retail to the left, or sorry, to the east and the west, um, which are zoned like commercial, uh, business commercial. To the south, you have planned development. Um, this is a vacant property, or I'm sorry, undeveloped property, and to the south, uh, is multi-use. I'm sorry, multi, uh, dwelling. This map indicates our future land use map. The proposed increased use of outdoor storage, outdoor equipment rental is not consistent with the adopted 2016 comprehensive plan, which recommends, uh, the site as retail office. And as you can see, I'm hitting the wrong button. The property is located right here in the middle, and that red indicates, uh, the retail office use in the future land use plan. And to the south, we still have that, um, multi-use for the planned development property. And this is just a description of what retail office, uh, is indicated in our zoning ordinance in the comprehensive plan. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application. Um, I've actually zoomed in on the area that was questioned before. Right here is where they would be, um, equipment sales, I'm sorry, equipment rental. There's gonna be a screening, vegetation screening along Overstreet Boulevard and along the entry to Home Depot to the south here. There are three slides here that show the, uh, the requested construction equipment, uh, for rent. All three of these slides, the equipment reaches a height of 10 feet. A sitting height. There's a specific term for that, but, and I will, I'll go back and... Okay. Right here is a photo that shows the existing use on the site and the, uh, parking off Overstreet. Uh, these are, this is where you have the trailer rental. And this is, uh, looking at the trailer rental as part of the, uh, west side of the parking lot off Overstreet. There is existing trees along, um, the landscape screening, but we have requested that there is additional screening, and they're going to put Buford Holly with a, a mature height of 15 feet. So as they plant them, they'll be eight feet, and the mature height will be 15 feet, so it, it will actually screen the, the construction equipment from the side of Overstreet. Right here is a photo of at the actual location of where the tool center will be expanding on the west side and the fire lane being shifted to the west. And this is just a closer photo of where that fire lane will be moved and where the tool centers, uh, will be expanded. And this is the east side of the property. And as part of our conditions, I've, uh, included another photo of the backside of the property. There is a detention pond that is also part of the property where all of the drainage, um, goes to. And there, there's currently existing storage on the site plan, as well as existing on the site, um, that blocks a gate that, to the entry of the detention pond, as well as, um, uh, a lift station on the other side, uh, just probably a good 30, 50 feet from the detention pond. This is the application that was, uh, submitted for the specific use permit. On October 1st, 2022, notice of the public hearing was published in Hood County News on October 6th, 2022. Notices were made to eight property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. At the time of this writing, staff has received zero letters in favor and zero letters in opposition. Staff recommends careful consideration of the request due to the site's location abutting to Overstreet Boulevard, a gateway street that will provide access to future mixed use and residential development to the south of this site. As indicated in the report, the future land use plan, comprehensive plan's retail office designation would not be supportive of intensification of the exterior outdoor use. And I'm blind, so I'm gonna read this from... If the planning and zoning commission considers favorable action on the specific use permit request, staff would recommend the following conditions. Compact power rental equipment shall be limited to those depicted and per the specific description of each equipment as shown on the two-page document titled Compact Power Rental Equipment, which is Exhibit B in the ordinance. Two, all placement of trailer sales rentals, construction equipment sales rentals, portable building sales, and outdoor storage shall be shown on the site plan, Exhibit C in the ordinance, with an applicant revision date of October 11th, 2022, except if otherwise indicated in these conditions. Number three, a landscape plan showing screening of the Home Depot equipment rental shall be submitted at the time of building permit review. The landscape plan screening shall be shown within the Overstreet Boulevard Landscape Planter extending from THD's West Drive to the middle drive of THD's site. The planting shall include a row of mature canopy trees planted 50 feet on center. A suggestion would be Schumark oak. A row of level screening shrubs planted a three foot on center, being a minimum of three feet mature height, and the suggestion would be Abelia. And abutting the parking lot storage area, a row of high-level screening shrubs planted five feet on center, and we're suggesting Buford Holly, providing a minimum eight-foot tall screening hedge. The screening shall be installed within six months of the approval of the SUP. And number three, um, is actually, we've changed that to 10 foot, so in the ordinance, it's been updated, so just note that for the minutes. Number four, the THD equipment rental along Overstreet Boulevard shall not be greater than eight feet in total height. A site plan depicting, actually, I, that's incorrect. For number three, it still is, we are requiring an eight-foot, uh, screening height. Number four has been changed in the ordinance, um, that the rental equipment can be no greater than 10 feet. Number five, a site plan depicting the following shall be submitted at the time of building permit review. The site plan shall show the limits of the outdoor storage and is only allowed in areas shown on the site plan as submitted and with the following. The site plan shall show vehicular maintenance access to the detention basin through the existing gate access to the detention basin at the southeast corner of the site. The existing gate to the detention pump station at the southeast corner of the site. Access shall be permanently delineated with yellow hatch paint and sign posted, "No parking or storage is allowed." The gutter line following all curb lines shall remain clear of any outdoor storage for a distance of three feet from the front of the curb. The site plan shall depict this area and be noted as outdoor storage not allowed. Number six, except as provided in these conditions, the SUP shall be subject to the supplemental standards as contained in the zoning ordinance. Number seven, the SUP is subject to all other city code requirements, permits, periodic inspections, and an inspection fee as established in the city's master fee schedule. Number eight, any violation of the supplemental land use standards or terms and conditions stipulated in the SUP may be deemed in violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may become null and void, and/or the certificate of occupancy may be revoked. Your voting options are, one, approval as presented, two, approve with conditions, three, continue the items to the next public hearing if more information is needed, four, deny the request.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for letting me open those together. I do want to make note in the record, um, that one of our commission managers, or Richard Haves, has excused himself from voting on D1 and D2. That was the reason for his absence from the dais right now. Any questions for staff? Mr. Grace?
Back to landscaping. Would you show me a, uh, plat that shows where all of the landscaping requirements are?
Uh, it wouldn't actually be in the plat, but I do have, um, I can go back to the slide where I zoomed in on, um, the requirements for the landscapes, or what they actually submitted to us for the landscape screening.
Okay.
And that, that's the slide right here.
Okay. I'm concerned about the area, uh, closer to 377 where all the rental equipment's gonna be parked. I don't see any landscaping between the equipment being parked there and Overstreet. Is there any landscaping requirements there?
Correct. Um, and that is included in our conditions. And they did, actually, this right here is a rendering that they sent us of what it will look like, so it kind of gives you a better idea of what that actually represents.
They'll extend all the way to the end of their parking lot.
That's the condition.
And screen all the construction equipment parking from Overstreet Drive.
I don't think it's going down the whole, it's just going down that dotted line, right?
So in the existing site plan that they submitted, it only shows partial screening. In our conditions, we are, are requesting more than that.
That was what I'm, I'm questioning.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. That's what I'm concerned about.
Could you pull up the picture showing the east side of the building where the fire lane's gonna be moved? You had just passed it a minute ago.
That's the west side.
Right there, yeah, the west side, I'm sorry, west side.
You do want the west side? Is this photo?
That's it, that's it, right there. Okay, the building's gonna be moved over, and the fire lane's gonna be shifted as well. Are we gonna lose these trees there on Overstreet?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
You won't lose those trees over there?
No. How, how close would that fire lane be to those trees?
Um, I'd have to double-check, but we have that screening wall right there, too. So we have room to pull that over and push that fire lane out a little bit more.
Right, 'cause I noticed it was a 21, a 24-foot fire lane, then jumps up to 31-foot there at the end, and it's getting pretty close to the street there.
Yeah, I don't think we should lose any of those trees.
Okay, 'cause those are pretty mature trees there.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
And that's gonna be a pretty high-traffic street once the...
There will be a wall there as well?
There's already existing wall there.
Okay, so the, the wall will not change?
I don't think so.
Of course.
Right, I don't think so. Is that an answer?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Kira Wali here. Actually, Lane, Lane is, is helping his team this evening, but I'm obligated to point out that there was a site plan submitted, um, not in your presentation. There is a small section of the wall that, um, this plan, I'll let Lane take a look at this, that states existing wall section to be removed. I think that is just the wall section that extends west, that it kind of wraps that corner. So there's a small section of curbing that needs to be removed to accommodate the fire lane, but not the entire wall will be removed, just a small section where the new, um, pavement would, would be placed.
Thank you.
Mr. Claus?
Yeah, and, and just looking at this picture, and I, and I recognize that the, the new tool center's gonna push over to the, uh, to the west, and it, which is gonna push the fire lane over, but in looking at this picture, and then looking at the overhead, are there any prohibitions or limitations that are precluding y'all from parking this equipment in other areas behind? I'm looking at what looks like a lot of area behind the building, along the side of the building, and behind the garden center. Is, is there a reason why you wouldn't use those areas for this equipment?
Yeah, they want the rentals pretty close to where that's gonna be, and I think out front for security purposes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant, commission members? For staff? Either of our staff members on this? Thank you, sir. Uh, if not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the first request, which is the replat request of D1.
Make a motion for approval, D1.
Have a motion to approve, um, the replat by Mr. Hallman, and a second by Mr. Grace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, now entertain a motion on the SUP request, please.
Make a motion for approval of the SUP with the conditions attached.
Have a motion by Mr. Hallman to approve the SUP as presented with the conditions attached. Do I have a second to that? A second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is S, is D3, SUP 2022-17. Request of Laurel Neff, um, request of Laurel Neff on behalf of Neff Living Family Trust for a specific use permit to allow animal grooming in a light commercial LC zoning district. The property is dress, is addressed as 816 North Houston Street. Amy?
All right, the location of this property is at 816 North Houston. The size of the property is 0.24 acres with a light commercial zoning. Um, it's across the street from the cemetery to the north, uh, there is a commercial use. To the, uh, to the west is an actual, uh, undeveloped property, and to the south is a single-family dwelling. The plotting history on this is the property's designated, is dedicated, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I can't read, is described as, uh, part of Block A2 of the Barton Edition. The purpose of the special use permit is to propose an animal grooming use, which requires the SUP in a light commercial zoning district. This is the site plan that was, um, submitted with the application. And this is the floor plan, which is also required with the application. This is a photo of, um, the, the property looking south from Arnold Street. And this is also an existing photograph of the property looking to the front of it, uh, from North Houston Street, from the cemetery. This is an application, the application that was submitted for the special use permit. On October 1st, 2022, notice of the public hearing was published in Hood County News. On October 6th, 2022, notice was mailed to 14 property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. At the time of this writing, staff has received zero letters in favor and zero letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval for this specific use permit request for an animal grooming business with the following conditions. One, a two-year, uh, SUP term in which the applicant must apply for another SUP once the two-year term is complete. The site plan, Exhibit A in the ordinance, while illustrating compliance with zoning board and adjustment, approval will need to be drawn in compliance with the technical driveway standards in the Code of Ordinances, Section 3.11.65 at the time of permitting. Three, this SUP is subject to all other city code requirements, permits, periodic inspections, and an inspection fee as established in the city's master fee schedule. Four, any violation of the terms and conditions stipulated in the SUP may be deemed in violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may become null and void, and/or the certificate of occupancy may be revoked. Your voting options are approval as presented, approve with conditions, continue the item to the next public hearing if more information is needed, and four, deny the request.
Thank you, Amy. Is the applicant here, or applicant's representative? And if so, would you like to speak? If you do, would you please come to the podium, please?
I am trustee.
Okay. I need you to come if you wouldn't, if, and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
The property, um, my daughter Patricia Byrd is the one that's handling, doing all of the necessary steps in organizing this, so if you have questions, could she be addressed? Thank you.
Any questions, commission members?
Just one.
Mr. Grace?
All right, Chairman. This does not allow, uh, boarding or other...
Mr. Grace, members of the commission, this does not allow any boarding or other activities than just the pet grooming activity?
So animals will be transients?
Transients, they will come and go.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and, um, I will entertain a motion on the SUP request, please.
Uh, motion to approve.
A motion to approve...
Conditions or not?
With conditions.
Motion to approve with the conditions by Mr. Grace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haves. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is SUP 2022-16. Request of Eva Royer, Royer, with a, for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhosted in a residential 7,000 R7 zoning district. The property is addressed at 520 West Bluff Street. Amy?
All right, um, as stated, the location of this property is at 520 West Bluff. The size of the property is, um... 0.189 acres, which comes out to 8,233 square feet. Uh, the zoning of the property has been, uh, it's been zoned, single-family residential, uh, District 7,000 R7 since 2001. Plotting history on the property is that it's been designated as the, yeah, I can't read that here. As the south half of the west half of Lot 3, Block 36 of the trash addition. A purpose of the special use permit is the applicant is requesting a short-term rental unhosted for a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. And as you see in the map, it's that central property outlined, um, and in the next map, this shows, uh, zoning districts in the area. As stated, it is R7, residential 7,000, and there's also light commercial surrounding the property. This third map, uh, represents a 600-foot... This third map represents a 600-foot boundary around the property with the pink houses indicating current short-term rentals within the area. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application. With three bedrooms, it is required to also have three parking spaces. So there's two parking spaces requested on the back part of the property, and Exhibit B indicates one parking space for the front part of the property and the drive. This is the floor plan that was submitted with the application. I've made the font bigger on several of the rooms so that it's able to be visible on the PowerPoint. The lines indicate part of the evacuation plan that was submitted with the special use permit application. This is a photo of the residents from the north... No. From the south, facing north of the property on West Bluff. And this is the east side, west side of the property from South Hannaford Street, showing the fence for the back property. This slide indicates the application that was submitted, the special use permit, I'm sorry, specific use permit application submitted. On October 1st, 2022, notice of the public hearing was published in Hood County News. On October 6th, 2022, notices were mailed to 24 property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. At the time of the writing, staff has received zero letters in favor and one letter in opposition. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One-year SUP term in which the applicant must apply for another SUP once the one-year term is complete. Two, the site shall conform to the site plan Exhibit A and Exhibit B in the ordinance and the floor plan Exhibit C in the ordinance. The SUP shall be limited to not more than two bedrooms. Wait, I'm sorry. That, this staff report is incorrect. Please note that the ordinance has been updated to three bedrooms. Number four, except as provided in these conditions, the SUP shall be subject to the supplement standards as contained in the zoning ordinance. Number five, this SUP is subject to all other city code requirements, permits, periodic inspections, and inspection fee as established in the city's master fee schedule. Six, any violations of the supplemental land use standards or terms and conditions stipulated in the SUP may be deemed in violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may become null and void, and/or the certificate of occupancy may be revoked. Your voting options are, one, approval as presented; two, approve with conditions; three, continue the item to the next public hearing if more information is needed; four, deny the request.
Thank you, Amy. Can you step, Amy, can you go back to the picture that had the... I'll go ahead and open the public hearing also. Can you go back and, the picture that had the fence down on the side? Can you point out where, yeah, where the two parking spots will be? Can you hit it with your cursor?
Yeah, so this tree right here is, I believe, is a dead tree. And this will actually be removed, and there'll be a gate that will be installed here, and the two parking spaces would go in place of the dead tree.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. If the applicant, would you like to speak? If so, come to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Eva Royer. I am the property owner at 520 West Bluff. And if you guys have any questions, I would be here to answer them.
And your residence is?
520 West Bluff. That is my home.
Your home?
Yeah.
And that's, so you'll be the responsible party for anything that occurs at this...
Unhosted, but correct.
Right. And so you realize that's a 24-hour-a-day...
I'm a licensed real estate broker in the state of Texas, and so I have many properties, and so I am familiar with how that would work.
So you manage other...
I do. Not, not special use or, you know, short-term rentals at this time, but I have long-term rentals and have for the past 20 years.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant right now?
I just wanted to clarify. You live right across the street? Is that correct?
I actually live in the house right now.
Oh, you live in the house?
I do, yeah.
Okay. So you'll be close enough to maintain it, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for her right now? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have two speakers that would like to speak on this agenda item, and the first one is Scott Andrews, or Andrew?
Yes, my name is Scott Andrews, and I live at 612 West Bluff. I bought, we purchased the house about, I think, four or five years ago. And traffic has been, gotten progressively worse on that street. West Bluff has become a backup to Pearl Street. And there are people driving up and down that road, probably 60, 50, 60 miles an hour. My neighbor actually almost got hit today. I've been almost hit numerous times. Parking on that street is also a zoo, especially when there's something going on downtown. I hate to try to fight it, but for the safety and for the ability for us to be able to park on our own street, I'd like to try to stop this in the process, unfortunately. It's kind of turning our little small town into a traffic nightmare and zoo of people coming and going and not really caring about the street. There's lots of trash that's being dumped on the street and around in the neighborhood. So I do have a problem with it being built, or rezoned as a, as a short-term rental, especially because those people will not care about the street or the neighborhood. Thank you for my...
Thank you. Second speaker on this item is Tracy Harper.
I'm Tracy Harper. I live at 615 West Bluff, and we have lived there 27 years. And of course, when I moved there in 1995, it was a quiet little street off the square with kids and elderly people, honestly, and that was about it. What Scott's referencing is our street, and I'm, not by show of hands, but I would venture everyone in this room has done this. People come down Morgan, they see the lights red at Pearl, they take a right on our street. I'm the first house behind the bail bond office on the right, and they go to Hannaford and take a left, and they can surpass the light and come out by Tankers Lee and across from Mama's Pizza. Oh, he's saying he never did it. I'm gonna tell you, everybody in this room's done it. And if you say you haven't, it's just because you didn't know you could do that. Being the first house on the right, I did almost get hit coming here today. Backing out of my driveway is an issue, because people never slow down. They see the lights red, and they hang a right by the bail bond office, and I'm halfway out of my driveway, and they don't realize it. The house here is a house on that Hannaford where they take the turn. That is the most, other than my, mine and Scott, who's across from me, other than where our houses are, that's the busiest part of our street. Putting extra spaces on the side with a gate, the house across Hannaford from it has an entry to their drive and carport directly across from that fence. There is rumor they are gonna ask for, to make it an Airbnb, and there is rumor that the house that just sold on the other side of this one is rumored to be an Airbnb. This is a residential family street. I would beg you. I've been involved in the community. I've served on the Historic Preservation Commission. This is our family street, that this not turn into Hotel Row with all the extra cars, every festival, every parade. And we're happy for those things to happen here. We love those things. You know, they park in front of our drive and everything. Just adding an extra five to 10 cars every weekend will be dangerous, and we don't want it. So, and I'm sorry for them, but, I mean, the neighborhood doesn't want it. And I would beg y'all to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on this item is Dan Martin.
Yes, my name is Dan Martin. I live at 521 West Bluff. We've got a close friend that takes care of some of these properties, and we asked, what's the, what's the good, what's the plus and what's the negative? She gave us one plus, that the yard might be mowed. The rest were kind of just, you know, extra traffic, late night coming and going. So, yeah, I just, there wasn't many positives that we could see, you know, for the, for the neighborhood. So, you know, that's about all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant or staff commission members? Okay, and if not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request, please.
Chair, I move for approval with the recommended conditions.
We have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the SUP as presented with the conditions. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A second by Mr. Hallman. All in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand, please, if you saw, Angela can see.
Aye.
We got four, and all those opposed? Two. Do you need me to call out? You got it? Okay. All right, so motion for the SUP request passes with a four to two vote. The next item on the agenda is SUP 2022-19. Request of Karen Hagler for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhosted in a residential 8,400 R8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 401 East Bridge Street. And I also, we have some members of the audience that has asked, requests that we pass these out to you. I think there should be seven. So you should have a set to pull off as you push them down. If not, you can have mine, since I don't get to vote. There's two, two pages to each set. Got it? Give you a minute to look over them, just a glance to see what you have in your hand, at least. And Amy?
All right, as stated, the location of this property is at 401 East Bridge Street. The size of the property is 0.1... I gotta do it again. I apologize, I'm blind, I have to look at my piece of paper. 0.443 acres. The zoning of the property is single-family residential 8,400 R8.4. The plotting history of the property is that it's the western half of Lot 1, Block 63 of the Nutt Edition. The purpose of the application, the, I'm sorry, the specific use permit application is for a short-term rental unhosted, used for a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling. The second map indicates the zoning of the property as well as surrounding properties. As stated before, again, it's in R8.4, as indicated in yellow. Hold on a second. The property to the southeast is in the Central Business District, and the properties to the north are light commercial... I'm sorry, it's planned development, to the north of Count's Alley. This third map shows the property inside the 600-foot buffer area with the boundary that also shows the properties and pink houses of the short-term, existing short-term rentals surrounding the proposed property use. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application. And this is the floor plan that was submitted with the application, indicating two bedrooms. This is a photo of the property from the front. And this is off East Bridge Street as well, showing the east side of the property. And this is the other side of the property with the proposed drive off Stockton Street. Here is the specific use permit application submitted. On October 1st, 2022, notice of the public hearing was published in Hood County News. On October 6th, 2022, notices were mailed to 19 property owners with 200 feet of the subject property. At the time of this writing, staff has received three letters in favor and six letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One-year SUP term in which the applicant must apply for another SUP once the one-year term is complete. The site shall conform to the site plan and Exhibit A of the ordinance and the floor plan Exhibit B of the ordinance. The SUP shall be limited to not more than two bedrooms. Four, except as provided in these conditions, the SUP shall be subject to the supplemental standards as contained in the zoning ordinance. Five, the SUP is subject to all other city code requirements, permits, periodic inspections, and inspection fee as established in the city's master fee schedule. Six, any violation of the supplemental land use standards or terms and conditions stipulated in the SUP may be deemed in violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may become null and void, and/or the certificate of occupancy may be revoked. Your voting options are approval as presented, approve with conditions, continue the item to the next public hearing if more information is needed, or deny the request.
Thank you, Amy. I'll open the public hearing, and is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Hagler, and my principal address is 9875 County Road 24, Fort Lupton, Colorado. But I am the owner of 401 East Bridge Street, and I intend to make that partially my home, part-time throughout the year, which is one of the reasons for applying for a short-term rental, so it could be available to me also. And I also, before you ask questions, I'd like to say that there were really two, possibly three things that really motivated me to resurrect this home. This is an 1877 home, which you probably have the information in front of you. And depending on who you speak with, it's either the first oldest or the second oldest home existing today in Granbury. I'm gonna just say in the top five, because I can't verify that, one way or the other. But it's an extremely old home, that I've exposed the walls inside, the cabin wall of the original cabin from 1877. The parking is more than adequate for just a two-bedroom, small... I think you could probably refer to it as a cottage, more than anything else. And I don't think that the impact, as far as traffic is concerned, is gonna have any, any impact, because the parking is offside. The other thing that you might want to know is that I, I took on this project because of my history in historic preservation and my willingness to be able to share this with the community. There's not many of these old properties that are left anywhere, and I thought by making it a short-term rental, in addition to my also having it as a home, that it could also be opened up to different people coming into the historic part of Granbury, because this is just a block and a half, two blocks at the most, off the square. So... two blocks at the most off the square. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Mr. Grace?
My question is, in your absence, who will be supervising this property?
Yes, sir. It's Ginger Horn, and many of you probably know her. She manages quite a few rentals, short-term rentals across Granbury. She's here locally, and she was born and raised in Granbury.
So, you, you will contract with her to represent you?
I've already contracted with her, yes.
Ensure that the property's in compliance at all times?
Absolutely. And she's, if you would to, I could probably provide you with a list of the other properties, but she, she's really a star at maintaining these properties.
Thank you.
I think she was here at the, prior to her hearing.
I believe so, yes. I asked her to step in for me.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Has a property been brought up to code, to all the new codes, as far as safety and all?
Again?
As far as, as far as the inspections and everything been brought up to code, to the current code?
Yes, we are waiting on the final paperwork for the, to pour the concrete. I don't know if you could see in that picture, but the forms are in place for the parking in the back. So, we're just waiting on that paperwork. And the electrical inspector needs to do a final inspection, but that permitting and work has all been done too.
Okay, and also the ground covering. I can't really tell by these pictures, I don't know if this is grass, dead grass, or gravel. What exactly is that?
That is a national type of gravel. I researched back to the 1800s, and they said this was pretty very low maintenance in regards to too much growing. So, I don't know if you would call this a zero landscape. I don't know if you can see, but we've taken some of the old Granbury rock, and I've made circles. The man is in the process of doing this. From that picture, you can't see it, for sitting areas outside. So, it's a, I don't know if you'd call it decomposed granite, but it is a type of rock. And then there will be some more that will be to the back that's a different color. So, there's gonna be accents, a design.
Is there any type of barrier below it to, to deter weeds from growing through it?
Yes, sir. They put down, I believe they sprayed, and they also put down a plastic.
Because if you have weeds going through that, that'd be a maintenance nightmare.
I know.
Kira?
I do know. But no, it, it's completely covered.
So, in checking the site, and today, we noticed the de-vegetation and use of this gravel type. Unfortunately, we weren't able to maybe get to Ms. Hagler in time to let her know. But the Historic Preservation District is, has some references to landscaping, and that includes ground cover. So, we need to have conversation about that proposal. It may need some historic review. And fortunately, the application does not include a landscape plan. So, we really, you know, we wouldn't want to be debating something that's not included in, in the required application materials.
So, can, are you saying, though, that Historic Preservation Commission will be having some input onto any kind of landscaping before it's completely gets a CO?
We are, we are going to need to have a conversation with the applicant about that. And our Historic Preservation Officer will be part of that review and conversation.
Will that have to take place before we have any action on it, or do you think that that has any bearing on what we're presenting to vote on tonight?
I, I don't think it has any bearing on what you're, you're debating tonight, because the landscape plan is not included, nor is it, you know, required. So, typically Historic Preservation occurs prior to an action on a plan commission or city council hearing. I would leave it to, to you if, if you should want to continue the item for further information, information, or to move it forward.
So, this is staff's recommendation that we continue this, as opposed to the recommendation you've already made?
It's an option to continue it, or, or you could move it forward.
Isn't the Historic Preservation Society a prerequisite to the approval?
So, Historic Preservation Commission decisions typically precede a plan commission item. It's a matter of, of the way we handle our applications.
Chairman, I recommend that we continue this item.
May I interject that I talked about this, I don't know if y'all know this property, but it was so completely overgrown to begin with. And so, I talked with, sorry?
You remember it.
You do remember, okay. So, I did talk with Ian about the zero landscaping, because if you look on the west end of town, there are several properties, including some commercial ones, that have done this. And, and I, we had to take all of that out. It was so deep. And the lady had put so many levels of rock that was preventing any kind of drainage. It was, I hate to call it a mess, but it really was. And anyway, so, as it looks now, in order to add greenery and color, we had talked about this early on last spring, and that there will be planting put in there. It's not just gonna look like gravel, if I, if I'm making myself clear. But we, I had this discussion in preservation with him.
Mr. Hallman?
Fortunately, I'm in agreements with Mr. Grace. He made a motion to possibly refrain from voting on this until a historical commission develops their plan. I would second that motion.
Go ahead, Kira.
Just procedurally, I think that you do have some folks here that were prepared to speak. So, you might wanna just go through the process of the hearing and then decide any motion.
I withdraw my second until the speakers speak then.
Do you have anything else, Mrs. Hagler?
No, I believe I've covered most everything. It's been a long process, but if you've watched it, it's, it's going forward nicely.
All right, thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Pamela Brewster.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Brewster. My husband and I live at 407 Count's Alley in Old Mill Crossing. We are in the 200-foot impact zone. Don't know why, but we didn't get our letters until today, our letter. And my next-door neighbor didn't get his letter. So, we brought two letters in opposition to add to your count. And he was coming down with something, so he wrote his up. We are opposed, as I just said, to this property at 401 East Bridge getting an SUP for an STR for several reasons. First of all, its density. I've spoken to you many times about that. There's a bed and breakfast across the street, a short-term rental next to that. There's a short-term rental in the next block that just behind, I mean, you could throw a rock and hit that short-term rental. And there are 11 more short-term rentals on East Bridge Street. We are surrounded by short-term rentals, and we really want to see no more of those, because we are losing our identity as a community, as a neighborhood. Number two reason that we deny it or aren't happy with this and don't wanna support this STR or SUP for this property, is it does sit at the entrance of Old Mill Crossing. We, the neighbors, are ill about the landscaping. I mean, it almost feels punitive, because we came and said we didn't want her taking out our 150-to-200-year-old live oak that belonged on the original nut property. Even the lady who lived in this home fought to keep that live oak. And we said we didn't want her to put in a 25-foot curb cut so RVs could park back there. And we were like, oh, my gosh, this is all gravel. You see my pictures. And then there's been gray gravel dumped today that's going to be there. It's just so incompatible with the neighborhood, with historic Granbury. Is that really three minutes? Was that my time?
You'll feel, just, you can continue, but just wrap up if you would.
Okay, okay.
But yes, I'm not gonna question the timer.
Okay, all right, okay. And, and I questioned the drawing that she hand-drew. She did go in front of the Historic Preservation Commission and asked for a 25-foot curb cut. That's where we said no. They allowed her 20 feet, and I'm looking at her drawing, and she's got 20 feet for the driveway. And then a radial, radial wings that are several more feet. That makes that curb cut much larger than the 20 feet that she was allowed. And the Historic Preservation Society said, "We never agreed to more than 18 feet, but we will give you 20 because of that island into our neighborhood there." So, I, we're real concerned about that. And is that going to mean that her guests can cut across our one-way entrance and go the opposite way, because her workers have been doing that now for months? We're very concerned about traffic. It is congested there, and if they do go the wrong way and people are making a right turn, that, those are accidents. So, I'm just going to, I'll wrap up.
Thank you.
We see no screening mitigation on here. We see no, no exit for fire or safety on her plans. And I don't know whether she was given a copy of the new regulations, but I don't see a lot of them addressed here. So, we're asking that you at least table it. We would love to see some greenery there. It's shocking. It is shocking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewster. The next speaker on this topic is Lou James.
Thank you. I'm Lou James, Pam's husband, also 407 Count's Alley. I will be brief. The, the maps that you have, this is actually your map. This is what Ms. Huawei and her people put together, showing the existing SUPs. All I did was zoom in and draw a little square around the applicant's property. And this shows the current density. This is the 150-foot blue circle, which is the least restrictive. And of, of course, it goes against that. There's one right across the street from it. So, I know the city is looking at density, and till and unless they do, you all get to decide density as one of the factors. And I think that, looking at this and thinking of density, this speaks for itself, remembering that this is single-family residential zoning. And this is what we have right now. Also, just to nitpick, could you call up the floor plan, please? Okay, the law that you passed in July says, has to have a dimensioned floor plan of the proposed short-term rental identifying bedrooms, other living spaces, and emergency evacuation routes. I don't see any dimensions. I don't see any emergency evacuation routes, so the application is legally inadequate on its face. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. And the next speaker is Danny Dwight.
Good evening. My name is Danny Dwight. I live at 405 Count's Alley. If you walk out my front door, and walk across the street to the sidewalk, and take a right, and you go down about 75 feet, the backside of this property is on Count's Alley. Starting back in the summertime, I walked that way probably three to five times a week. I noticed that she was doing construction, and a good part of the property at the back of it, she was doing nothing. The grass continued to grow, and the weeds continued to grow, until just a few weeks ago, when the weeds were, I'm almost six feet tall, and the weeds were taller than I am. And one of the neighbors decided to report it to compliance, and she finally cut the grass after, I can't tell you how many months. The previous presentations and tonight, the applicant has told you that she lives in Colorado, a member of the Historical Preservation Board, and she's gone to considerable work to erase, expose, and preserve the interior of the house. I've never been in the house. I cannot address that. So, I'll just be addressing what I see outside. You've seen numerous photographs up here. She basically scraped the entire, or three-quarters of the property of all vegetation, except for a few trees. What does not show up in this photo right here is that every house in the neighborhood, every house in the neighborhood has grass, has shrubs, has flower beds. There are no gravel yards. She mentioned some on the west side of town. We're on the east side of town. She mentioned commercial businesses. This is a single-family residential area. This is an eyesore to the entire neighborhood. It does not fit in. And the zoning ordinances said it's supposed to be harmonious and adaptable to the surrounding land uses. This isn't. This is a, it's, it's ugly, and it doesn't fit with what the zoning ordinances say it's supposed to do. One of the first things the owner did when she came to get the property was, she wanted to enlarge the flower, the driveway, rather. You heard about this a while ago. 125 to 150-year-old trees she wanted to cut down so an SUV could be parked back there more easily. Bottom line is, I am thoroughly and completely opposed to this being an Airbnb. You heard a moment ago the density issues? This simply exacerbates that on Bridge Street. She has chosen to ignore the city compliance ordinances about keeping her grass cut and had to be reminded to do it. She doesn't mind cutting down trees that are 200 years old, or 150, or whatever they are. And she doesn't mind destroying the neighborhood with a house that looks like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Wayne Mills.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Mills. I live at 629 East Bridge Street. The last several speakers have covered most all the issues, except for one that I had in here. Bridge Street is a, a highly trafficked area with pedestrians. And since they put in the hike and bike trail on the east end of Bridge Street, on the north side of the street, we now have the, the passage, the blocked-off area with no parking, where we can have pedestrians travel along that area. Until you get to the dollhouse, which is where the hike and bike trail takes off and goes back over towards Count's Alley. There are two homes that do not have sidewalks in front of them for the pedestrians, this house and the yellow house that's right next to it. So, I would ask some consideration that, from a pedestrian safety standpoint, if you go off to the other side, there's sidewalks and they run all the way to the square. These are the only two houses that don't have sidewalks. And from a pedestrian safety aspect, I have concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Yeah, she may respond back. That's fine. I'll give you permission to do that, if there's something that you have to add that you haven't added already.
Yeah, I will. This historic tree that sits in the middle of the road, it was an erroneous piece of information that was passed around. I have no ownership or anything to that tree, and I had no interest in any way cutting it down. The reason for this curb cut, which is a 20-foot curb cut, and I don't have the letter from Ian, the way that it was approved was the 20-foot was inside of the curb cut, the width of the driveway, so the two cars can park side by side. But the flare coming out is more, I think they gave me a five-foot flare. So, what he's saying, or whoever it was that was saying that, is also not correct information from what I was permitted to have. I didn't mention on the gravel that they're looking at at this point in time, there's also, I have a CA for a white picket fence that's four foot tall that's going to come around the front of this, in which inside, we are putting all kinds, as I mentioned before, of plant material. But we couldn't save the plant material that was there because of all the depth of rock. The rock was probably that deep that this lady had brought in over a 30-year period of time. It was the only way to bring it forth, and then, in regards to being able to clear it, and then to plant again. So, that's another thing I'd just like to add. In regards to exit, with my floor plan that I did was previous to the July, whenever that was, meeting that y'all had, every single one of rooms in this house has a door that exits to the outside. It was built that way. And, and so, there is no exit problem. Either windows or anything of the sort are not a problem to this. And I just marked them with little bars, because there was no request at that time for the dimensions, et cetera, and so on. So, I'm, I'm just responding to these very sundry things. I happen to love trees. I've got a huge pecan tree in there that we took all the vines off so that it could grow again. There's also a huge live oak that's in there, et cetera, et cetera. I, I don't, I'm only wanting to clarify my position on all of this, so that you don't feel that I'm being misrepresented one way or the other. And I think I've covered everything that was just brought up. And I think I've covered everything that was just brought up. Oh, weeds. I'm sorry, the weeds.
Step to the microphone back. Sorry, they record the meetings. Thank you.
One other thing. You had a big rainstorm. If you remember, in the last, whatever it was, a month, it wasn't a problem, and then everything grew. Okay, the man that's doing this landscaping, when there was a, a complaint turned in about the weeds along my chain link fence in the back, he had that mowed down in 48 hours. It wasn't any kind of length of time whatsoever. And we were working and concentrating on the front end too. So, thank you for your attention.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for the applicant now? Anything? If not, I'll close, any questions for staff? Not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this agenda item for the request for a special use permit.
I second your, like, once again, I've made a motion that we continue this until we have assurances from the Historic Commission that this property is going to be in compliance.
Compliance with landscaping?
Landscaping. Uh, anything that falls within the purpose of the Historic Commission.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Grace to continue, uh, this agenda item to, um, until such time that we have approval from HPC to move forward. Is that correct, the way to say that? And a second of that motion by Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to continue. The next item Virginia, on the agenda tonight is D6 PL dash 2022 dash 21, continue the request of Lonnie and Sandra Ledbetter to minor plat of 49.360 acre tract of the J, of the GW Mead survey, abstract 350, as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Iron Horse Edition. The property is addressed as 601 Meander Road. Amy?
I stated this property is located at 601 Meander Road. It is 49.36 acres, an interim holding zoning district. That being the actual home, the single-family dwelling, as you can see in this map, is the only portion that is actually inside city limits at this time. The plating history of the property is that it's Lot 1, Block 1 of the Iron Horse Edition. The purpose of the minor plat is that it's a single-family dwelling proposed for demolition to build a much larger single-family dwelling on site. On this slide, you'll see the actual plat that was submitted with the application. And this slide indicates the, the plat application that was submitted. There are no variances requested at this time. The DRC, uh, I'm sorry, there are all comments, the DRC comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the minor plat. Your voting options are approval of the minor plat as presented, two, approve, approve of the minor plat with conditions, three, continue the item to the next public hearing if more information is needed, or four, deny the request for the minor plat.
Thank you, Amy. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? See anybody, the people that I know, or they've already spoke, so. We have no applicant. Um, any questions for staff? Mr. Hayes?
The original staff report listed three variances for this request. Have those been resolved in some other manner?
Those have actually been, um, something we should have captured in the presentation. Those have been, um, resolved by staff, and your, um, voting options should be approved with, um, uh, approval of variances as a first motion. And then as a next motion, a voting, vote to one of the options showing on the, the screen. Thank you for, for noting that. I apologize.
So what are the variances? Have we seen? Did you, were they in the packet? Did I miss them?
Oh, oh, so the variances are, as noted in the staff report attachments.
Guess I missed that.
And those, those include section of the subdivision ordinance, section 3.9 and 4.5 for wastewater and sanitary sewer, not to extend and install. They have a, um, onsite facilities. Subdivision ordinance, um, 4.10 point B, improvement of Old Grun Berry Road. It is an existing, um, surface street. Uh, subdivision ordinance 3.9 and 4.6, not to extend or install centralized water. Um, they have a, a well as proposed, and staff does support those variances in whole.
Any questions for staff? Tim?
I did. I'm, what exactly are they, why are they replating this? What is, I guess I'm not following what's going on here.
The reason for the plat is they're desiring to build a new single-family residential structure on site.
Okay.
And, okay.
So that requires it to be a lot and block?
Requires a new, a plat, mhm.
Okay. Are we clear on the variances? Okay. Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion on the minor plat request, please.
Motion to approve. The minor plat is presented.
Well, that's, I thought they were rolled into the plat somehow. I think that's why I'm confused. Normally, we do have those variances that we vote on.
I apologize. I understand.
So we want to vote on the variances first?
We need to vote on the variances first. Thank you.
All right, so let's step back.
I'm in my motion to include with conditions.
Okay. I need, and I think I gotta step back a second. Um, John, if you'll, if I could get you to remove your motion just for a minute.
I will.
Okay. So first of all, we need to vote on the three variances that are on, in our packet. Um, and a motion, the recommendation from staff is to approve those three variances. So I need a motion, uh, on what to do with their, on those three variances, to approve or disapprove, please.
Motion for approval of the three variances as presented.
So a motion to approve by Mr. Hallman on the three variances as presented by staff, and a second by Mr. Grace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Grace, would you like to reset your motion on the minor plat request, please?
Recommend approval of the minor plat as presented.
Have the motion on your table on, with the conditions or just the number one? What were?
So staff would recommend, um, number one is presented.
Okay. Approval of Mr. Grace that we have, I mean, sorry, has a motion by Mr. Grace to approve the minor plat as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we got through that one. All right, the last agenda, on the, last agenda item on the meeting tonight is D7 PL dash 2022 dash 22. Consider request of Carl Greer on behalf of Josiah Ventures LTD to amend the preliminary plat for Sandstone Estates Phase 3 as lots 1 through 3, Block 6, Phase 3A, and lots 1 through 20, open space A and B, Block 1. Lots 1 through 9, 27 through 33, Block 3, and lots 1 through 4, 13 through 16, Block 4, Phase 3B of Sandstone Estates addition. The property is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Loop 567 and Highway 51. Amy?
Yes, the, the location of this property is at 2001 Weatherford Highway. The size of it is 14, I'm sorry, 14.54 acres, which is Phase 3. And all phases of the Sandstone addition is a total of 36.47 acres. Um, the plating history is, that the final plat of Phase 1 of Sandstone Estates was approved by the City Council on March 2nd, 2021. The preliminary plat for Sandstone Estates was approved by City Council on November 21st, 2018, and subsequently granted a six-month extension on Oct, on October 31st, 2019. Lots 1 through 3, Block 6, Phase 3A, and lots 1 through 20, open space A and B, Block 1. Lots 1 through 9, 27 through 33, and you can read the rest. Um, the purpose of this, uh, preliminary plat amendment is to subdivide Phase 3 into two lots, 3A and 3B. 3A is proposed for commercial use, and Phase 3B would be proposed as residential use. And as stated, and Phase 1 and 2 are currently under construction. This slide represents the site plan that was, I'm sorry, this is not the site plan. This is the actual plat. This is the plat amendment that was submitted. And I'm gonna actually use this little thing, this guy over here. Okay, so this little L-shaped part of the property, this is 3A. This would be the commercial use. So they're, they're requesting to actually split this 3 that goes along here. This is all originally 3 on the preliminary plat, and they're wanting to subdivide that. And then 3B would be all of these individual lots on Phase 3B.
So the part where your cursor is over at the corner, were those originally residential lots?
No. This is actually un-
It was all commercial before what we saw?
No.
I know this is commercial, what you're pointing to now.
Okay, so.
But, let's see.
Are you talking about the zoning or what the actual, like, what it looks like today? The use?
Yeah.
Yes.
What we saw before versus what we're seeing now was, so it looks like some of it's encompassing some of what was residential lots, so less residential lots. There's less purple on the one you had before, and now there's green drawn on the purple. The one where you have the colors.
So that's, okay, yes.
So were those purple that's included in the green, were those residential lots before?
They're, they're plan development.
Right, but.
Yes.
Trying to-
Let, let me jump in and help a little bit. Um, in your packet, in your PDF copy, there's a map that, um, is correct. Um, the overall site for the existing preliminary plat that is proposed to be amended extends to the right on the screen that you're looking at, to where the green IH is. Okay? Right there. Thank you, Amy. And so the, the blue outline should extend over that far. It looks like it shrunk somehow. Um, and then I think that'll help you to see how it lines up with that graphic that shows the overall preliminary plat. Is this still confusing?
Also, in the, under zoning history in the staff report, it shows that the 25.456 acres of planned development, single-family residential, is what you see in purple.
Is it correct to say all we're doing is splitting Phase 3 into two phases? We're not changing what's, what's residential, what's commercial. We're just splitting into two so that commercial can be developed separately from the remaining residential?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So what you see on, on this map is the existing zoning districts. And then what you see outlined is Phase 3, and we just, they want to split that, right where you see like commercial is right where that lot line would hit, between the east and the west. And the light commercial, uh, Phase 3A would be proposed for commercial use. And they would continue with the development of residential, where you see the purple and also where it's highlighted. The north and south part would all be 3B. Let me rate where my finger is, my pointer.
Okay. First, sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm done. I was just flipping it to this slide so you can kind of see where the highlighted property lines, um, that's all Phase 3A. And how, or this right here, the lot line would actually split right where the zoning district also splits.
Uh, question for staff. Uh, the vacant area on the north side that's included in the, uh, Sandstone Estates, Phase 1 and 2, how is that dedicated?
It's currently planned development. Um, and those are-
That vacant area that has no lots in it, on the north, north side of the-
Let's see.
Where it says Estates Phase 1 and 2, Slide B 799, you know, precinct Phase 1. There are no lots in that particular area within-
Yes, that, that'll be, uh, dedicated for drainage.
That's drainage only. Okay, so that's a retention pond?
I didn't mean to do that.
Detention.
You're talking about this, this right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
How is this fall, uh, question for staff. How does this fall within the city's park lands requirements? And how is that addressed by this?
Um, it did go to council for the preliminary plat, and it was, it was addressed during that time. This is just the last phase of the, of the addition.
How was that addressed by council?
Okay, well.
The applicant, Carl Greer is here, and, and I think he's saying something we all can't hear. Might be helpful if he wants to make a statement. Sure. Sorry, thank you, Rita.
Um, actually, I'm not changing anything on the plat. Um, when I originally did the, uh, plat, and the preliminary plat and the zoning, all the residential is a planned development. The commercial is a 6.9 acre, separated, commercial tract zoned. And I have finished the development of Phases 1 and 2. Um, they were accepted, or they were, um, completed two Fridays ago. And so now that's open. That's everything to the, the right-hand side of the drawing. The big open area there is my detention pond. It's fully fenced in and set up for maintenance and irrigation and so on and so forth. So that when the water comes through there, you know, it fills it up and then I let it go back into a drainage channel at a prescribed rate. Um, in relationship to the original park thing, I paid money into the park fund. That's one of the options that you have. And so I paid money into the park fund per the city requirements based upon the number of lots. And what, well, only thing that's happened, or what we're doing here, is that, um, I'm now, I've finished the first two phases of the residential. I have another 44 lots to do in Phase 3. And I'm starting to work now on developing the commercial corner. And it was always my intention, it's 6.9 acres, but I, I didn't final plat it. And so I just preliminary platted the 6.9 acres. Now what I'm doing is I'm subdividing it because we ought to use her on the corner. And so we're doing a three-lot plat. I'll be right back in front of the P and Z once that's approved with the final plat for that corner, which, you know, that's much more extensive, as you're aware. I'll, I'll figure out my drainage and, and they're actually running the site plan through the city at this current time. We were hoping that where they'd be here at the same time, but their, their part of it didn't work out. And so really, all I'm doing is setting up for a final plat on the commercial, the three lots. For whatever reason, don't really understand why, I'm just trying to do what they asked me. Um, I never intended for Phase 3 of my residential to be part of the commercial, but they asked me to re-amend the plat to include my residential as part of the plat revision. I'm not changing anything on what you're looking there for the residential. I've already got the lots designed. I've got it preliminarily engineered. You know, it'll just be a timing issue as we, as we get houses in on Phase 1 and 2. So all I'm trying to do right now is just do the, the commercial track. And I'm starting that development. I don't have my users yet on the other two lots of the commercial. I'm just working on the corner at this time, and we'll do a final plat on that. And then if the, if the, uh, P and Z approves their, because it'll be a, an SUP, if they approve it, then we'll build that. But that's, you know, the next thing on, online.
I, I understand, and, and thank you for that. I mean, how many lots in the Phase 2, 3, and 4?
Um, I did 61 that are on the ground right now that I just finished. And then I've got another 40- And then I've got another 44 coming in phase three, the residential that you're looking at. And then I've got three commercial lots.
Okay, so there'll be 100-plus lots?
105 total, yes, sir. And I've got various sizes in there. I put some 60-foot frontages in there. The majority of them are 70s and, or 70-foot frontages, the 8400s. And then in the far upper right-hand is a section of 22 patio home lots. They're all gated, they're private streets. I put in all fancy light post and signpost and-
I'm sure it's beautiful. And we've watched it grow.
Okay.
I see the only open space you have is next to phase two and the whole development. Is that right?
Actually, I've got, I've got two, I mean, the detention pond is part of it because I'm leaving it open. I've got a dog park in there. And then the other thing I designed is so kiddos wouldn't have to go all the way around to get there. I actually took out several lots in the middle and there's an open space where I ran a sidewalk through so that kiddos could cut through without having to stay on the streets. And that's, that's gonna have some benches, it's also gonna have, you know, a covered area. And I actually met with my landscape guy today and we're actually, have got it designed now where, because we can fit a pickleball court in there up on the far north street and we're gonna be doing that too.
Yeah, my main concern is that your density is, you know, pretty significant. And there's gonna be lots of children in this. They're gonna need someplace to play.
Wow, that's, I mean, I've done all that in the PD and all that's, all that's done.
Way to go, city.
Way to go. I mean, you did it.
No, well, I'm great. I hope that your detention area becomes a nice park someday.
Well, I've got it, I've got it, you know, grass is gonna be irrigated and, you know, I've got plans on what we're doing in there and I've got it fenced on the walls and so on and so forth. Actually, I've already done all that.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, for the applicant or staff?
Not for me.
Not for anybody? Okay, thank you, Mr. Greer.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I had one more.
I'm sorry, Amy? Go ahead, I'm sorry. I was looking down, didn't see you come back up there.
Well, I, I think y'all figured this part out, but when it came to the tree preservation and parks and things like that, it did go to council. And if you look at the minutes on the council hearing, you can see all the details as far as the motion to approve with, with the indications of tree preservation and paying into the park fund and whatnot, so.
Thank you. So we have closed the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion on the request to amend the preliminary plat.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hallman to approve the amendment to the preliminary plat and a second by Mr. Grace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Greer. And for the business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.